attendees and then we'll. It looks like Vice President Dos is in there as a as an attendee.
I see him, I'm trying to promote him now.
Okay.
Here we go.
Great, so I will call to order the special board workshop Tuesday, October 5th, sorry, lost my place there. Can we get a roll call, please?
Yes, student board trustee Dana. I don't know if she's joining us tonight. Okay, student trustee Lyra.
Here.
Trustee Davidson.
Trustee Boyd.
Here.
Trustee Duran.
Here.
Vice President Dos.
Here.
President Hinckley.
Here.
Superintendent Wells.
Here.
Thank you.
Great, and do you mind putting up the mission and vision statement and maybe the board members can take turns reading it? Thanks, so I'll start with the mission. The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student. Vice President Dos, could you start with our first meeting norm?
Absolutely. Meeting norms, maintain a focus on what is best for our students.
And trustee Duran.
To ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully.
And trustee Boyd.
Three, endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's belief in what is best for students.
And trustee Davidson.
Make a commitment to effective deliberation. Each one listening with an open mind while others are allowed to express their points of view even if one disagrees.
Great, thank you. And we now need a motion to approve our agenda, which was written up for us by Director Biggs. So if you have any questions about the agenda, please direct them to him, otherwise I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the agenda for this evening.
Student trustee Dana. Is she here? I can't see everyone. Is she here?
Not yet, I don't.
Okay, student trustee Lyra.
Yes, I was gonna also say that Allison, she like let me know just now that I think she's going to be like a little bit late tonight.
Okay, thank you. Student trustee Lyra, how do you put on the agenda? Yes, thank you. Trustee Davidson.
Yes.
Trustee Boyd.
Yes.
Trustee Duran.
Yes.
Vice President Dos.
Yes.
President Hinckley.
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, so before I turn it over to the superintendent and Director Biggs for the workshop, I just wanted to welcome the other attendees that we have here. This obviously is a public board meeting and we will have, when we have discussion and questions, we'll take public comment at that time. So thank you for being here and and we'll let's listen to this presentation and then we're we'll have a discussion and opportunity for the public to ask questions or make comments at that time. So I'll hand it over to Superintendent Wells.
Thank you, President Hinckley. We're excited to have the opportunity to get into special education one-on-one, the basics, and I think it's really important that we look at our groups that we talk so much about and learn about their programs and services that we provide. In the future, we'll be looking at hopefully our ELD population, our other disenfranchised groups. And but tonight, we're going to focus in on special education one-on-one by our senior director, Dr. Brian Biggs, who is excited about his profession and special ed, the world of special ed and what it has to offer. And so at this time, I pass the baton over to Dr. Brian Biggs.
Thank you, Dr. Wells, and thank you, board, and the community that's here this evening. I'd like to just first say that this was a difficult presentation to put together. I think there is a lot of information that I'd like the the board to know regarding special education. I don't even know where to start. For for families that are navigating the terrain of special education, it is cumbersome. It's complex, it's it's is laden with with complexities of procedural and substantive compliance. And while the board may be introduced to 92 slides this evening, this is only the start to hopefully future workshops that I can go a little bit deeper. Because our students in the world of special education need to have understanding, they need to have an understanding of the system and as how we as a district and families within the district can better understand the legal landscape and so we can better support our students with accessing their education. So I appreciate the opportunity. And while there's a lot of slides, I hope to go through them and leave sufficient amount of time for questions and discussion. So if we can go to the next slide. Today, we are really going to focus our attention on a few main areas. To me, this is the entry-level information to be able to prime the board with an understanding, a basic understanding of special education. So we're going to go through the nuts and bolts of IDEA and we'll we'll unpack what that acronym means in a little bit. But I'll just spell it out. IDEA stands for the federal legislation called Individuals Disabilities Education Act. And it is the the legislation that really lays the foundation for the work that allows our students with learning differences to have access to public education. And so today, what we're going to do is we're going to dive into what is special education? Let's unpack it a little bit. We're then going to go into a little bit of a historical context of special education law overview, where we've been and where we're at now. Not too deep, because there really has a, you know, a long history, but at least hitting on some of the milestones of the the current laws that really protect our students with learning differences as well as their families. And then we will we'll really take a nice ride along the the IEP process and what that means, everything from having having concerns to making a referral to assessment and and so what. To really inform the the board and the community what that process looks like. And then we'll go down through the continuum of services and give a, you know, a brief overview of what the continuum of services are available through a student's IEP in order for them to have access and receive FAP, FAP being a free and appropriate education. And then getting a little more granular is the threat of educational benefit, and that really ties all of the the pieces together when we think about special education and really understanding how we support students' unique needs in order to to make adequate progress. And we will then go into diving into what an IEP looks like, the Individual Education Plan. And I think a lot of us, you know, we talk about students in special education, we talk about students that have an IEP, but what does it mean? What does it mean for a family to be able to receive this document, this contract between the the district and the parents to ensure the students with a learning disability, with an educational disability have access to their education and and to be able to see what it 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 looks like and go through the different pages. And then we're going to go over procedural safeguards. I think it's one of the most, it's a cornerstone of of, you know, the the legislation of IDEA. It really, you know, speaks to the rights of of students with disabilities and the rights that families have. And, you know, a lot of the times, it's it's something that is may not be as spoken about, but we need to speak about it and parents need to be informed and the and the the board needs to be informed about what rights parents have. And then we'll have the opportunity for some question discussion. So let's go to the next slide. What is special education? Next slide, please. Can I can I actually have a little help? Trustee, student trustee Lyra, would you mind reading the slide for me?
Yeah, for sure. Okay. Special education is defined as specifically designed instruction at no cost to the parent, designed to meet the unique needs of the child with disabilities. Instruction can include classroom and home instruction as well as instruction provided in hospitals and institutions.
So this is this is just the, this is this is the beginning. This is just the beginning to understand and specifically looking at specifically designed instruction at no cost to the parents. That kind of lays the foundation for special education. Can you please go to the next slide? And one thing that, you know, special education really is is about is in the 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 name of the acronym IEP is individualized and appropriate. And it's one of the major principles of our federal legislation of IDEA, Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that a child's IEP education must be individualized and appropriate for their unique needs. So in order for a school to receive federal funding, under under this legislation, the state must have a policy that ensures that students receive a free and appropriate education. And within our SLPA, within our special education local plan area, we follow guidance from them with regards to how we are delivering and interpreting the laws, both from the federal and then also at the state level. The IDE, the IDEA requires the development of appropriate special education program and related services occur through the vehicle known as the IEP. Next slide, please. Continuing this is special education is provision of instruction, services, accommodations, and/or modifications for eligible students. I listed a few different services and considerations, and we're not going to go through these right now, but it's just a, you know, a preview into to the continuum of services that are afforded and available for students that are eligible for special education. Next slide, please. All right. Vice President Dos, can you read this slide for me?
Absolutely. What is special education? Special special education is not a place. Instead, it is service, services, and support for students. For students with learning difficulties due primarily to cultural or economic differences, lack of familiarity with the English language, or limited school experience, designed to meet the needs of students who have temporary physical disabilities.
Thank you so much, Vice President Dos. I think this is an important slide because there's a lot of misconceptions when we think about special education that can perpetuate silos and special education really is a supplemental support for students that are general education students. And these are different considerations that as as parents, as IEP team members, in addition to parents, need to take into consideration is that special education really is not a place. We need to consider some exclusionary criteria so that we don't discriminate against a student that may have other that and and make them eligible for special education based on other conditions such as a physical or temporary temporary physical impairment. We have other supports within within the school system that can support these students. But this is, I think, a really important slide really to emphasize that special education is not a place. Next slide, please. So, you know, I think a lot of people want to understand is, well, who who's eligible for special education? And under the legislation of IDEA, we have the opportunity to support students that meet eligibility criteria under one of 13 categories listed here, and we'll go through them in a little bit, between the ages of three and 22. And I want to make a note before we read these eligibility criteria, these is, this is, this is eligibility criteria based on education code. This is not medical diagnoses, and sometimes that can be a little bit hard to explain to families. I personally feel, based on my experience within the field, that our threshold for eligibility is higher than like a diagnosis may be. But we also have some criteria about requiring a student to making the determination that after a student meets eligibility criteria of one of these 13 eligibility categories, that they require specialized instruction or services. So our 13 categories, autism, deaf and blindness, hard of hearing, emotional disturbance, other health impairment, speech or language impairment, traumatic brain injury, deafness, intellectual disability, multiple disabilities, orthopedic impairment, specific learning disability, and visual impairments. Most often, you know, in our in the school district and actually within the state, there's a high number of students that meet eligibility under five categories primarily. And those are students with specific learning disabilities, students with speech and language impairments, students with other health impairments, students with emotional disturbance, and students under the eligibility of autism. Next slide, please. So we didn't go into depth about the different criteria of each eligibility category, which I would love to at some point in time with the support of some of our school psychologists that are really positioned to look at eligibility categories for students. But they're pretty specific and they're really rigid based on looking about certain standards for students to be able to not meet or meet in order to to meet eligibility under one of those categories. And if a student does meet eligibility under a category, there's still a second prong, and that prong is what I was referencing earlier. And that's if the impact of the disability is such that a special education services are required for the child to receive meaningful educational benefit. And so some people may ask, what does that, what does that mean? My student meets eligibility under specific learning disability. My student meets eligibility under autism. My student meets eligibility under speech-language impairment. But we're we're saying that they don't meet, they're not eligible for special education? I don't understand. And it comes down to is, do they require specialized services? Because we want to think about the least restrictive environment. If a student is able to compensate, is able to compensate and be able to make adequate progress with accommodations alone, then we're not looking at an IEP. And I think that's really, really big because IEP is really about targeting needs in order to be able to close that gap so that they can have access to their education. And so there may be times when a student meets eligibility under one of the 13 categories, but it is not recommended for special education. And again, that's a that's a team decision, and it's it's really looking at all that data and making an informed decision based on that student. If the IEP team does find that the student is eligible for special special education, it identifies services, accommodations, and/or supplemental supports that is necessary for that student to make progress in school. Next slide. Parent involvement. This is really critical and we'll learn a little bit throughout the special education law and history about parent involvement. Over the years, within the reauthorizations of our legislation, parent involvement has been a pivotal pivotable component that we're increasing because it's necessary. Our parents know more about their student than we do. And we need to invite them into the conversation and really engage in authentic partnerships for parents to be able to have access and understanding to the IEP process so that they can contribute to the development of a student's IEP and be able to advocate for them. So I think really, you know, special education right now is is really working towards strengthening the role of parents' responsibility of being part of, or opportunity, I should say, of being part of their student's IEP plan and making that known amongst all stakeholders. I sometimes go to meetings where, you know, it can be intimidating. You're a parent amongst six different professionals. How do we flip that? How do we create, you know, a a space where parents can be part of a conversation and development versus really being siloed and and not being able to have meaningful participation? So it's something that we look at a lot, and we can talk about it a little bit more, but it's something that our department in Albany in special education is really looking at and seeing how we can have parents be involved more within the IEP process. And I think this evening, you know, going through the the workshop, that can help. Because I think a lot of families don't understand special education. The terminology is is thrown around very easily, but really understanding some of the nuts and bolts, it takes time. And so part of our role with within special education is ensuring that families have meaningful opportunities to participate in their child's education at school and at home. Next slide, please. Special education law and overview. Next slide, please. You know what? Can I, I'm just gonna pause for a second and and check in with 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 the board. Before we go into this next slide, any questions with regards to to some of the information with presented regarding what is special education? Because we have 92 slides and I don't want to wait an hour and a half and miss an opportunity. Vice President Dos?
Yeah, I had a, excuse me, I had a couple of questions. One point that you made, which I thought was really important, talking about eligibility for students. And so I guess my question is related to that. Can parents or guardians work with the special education department in order to apply for exceptions around eligibility or are those 13 criteria locked in and there's there's no exceptions around that?
That's a great question. Those are our 13 categories from from our legislation that we have to kind of look at. Now, even with those 13 categories, there's a lot of opportunities to be able to think through different ways that a student can be eligible. So there's some categories such as other health impairment that are a lot broader than maybe, let's say, specific learning disability. And I think for the intensive purposes of today's meeting, I don't know if we can go through every category and explain it, and I would love to at a future meeting. But no, we have to really adhere to those 13 categories with regards to eligibility for for under IDEA. Are there any other questions? I don't, I'm having a hard time seeing. Doesn't look like.
I don't see any of their hands.
Thank you so much for helping out. President Hinckley. Okay, so let's dive into to special education law overview. Can I have trustee Davidson read the slide for us, please?
Happily, so the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act or IDEA, this act provides rights and protections to children with disabilities and to their parents. The Individuals with Disabilities Act is a federal law that mandates and affirms the right of all children with disabilities to a free appropriate public education, otherwise known as FAP.
Excellent, thank you so much. Next slide, please. So we're going to continue. The purpose of IDEA is to ensure that all students with disabilities have available to them a free and appropriate education that emphasizes special education and related services designed to meet their unique needs. And this is actually really important. It's 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 about helping them, you know, access their education, but also preparing them for employment and independent living. And it's really, you know, a conduit for how do we get a student to be engaged within the curriculum to have access, but also setting them up so that they can exit the public education system with the skills and tools so that they can navigate by themselves. It also is to ensure that the rights of children with disabilities and parents of such are protected. And in assist with local education, assist with states, localities, educational service agencies, and federal agencies to provide for the education of all children with disabilities and assess and ensure the effectiveness of efforts to educate children with disabilities. Next slide, please. History of special education. So we talked a little bit about IDEA. Thank you so much, trustee Davison. IDEA was originally enacted by Congress in 1975 to ensure that students with disabilities have the opportunity to receive FAP just like any other children. The law has been revised many times over the years. It actually has been revised in 2004, 2006, and 2011. And I think instead of hearing for me, I'd like to be able to to show a video about the special, the history of special education that provides a little bit more detail regarding IDEA and how we got to where we're at right now. And hopefully will be able to help us think through where we need to go in the future. So Julie, are you able to play that? That video there?
Let me check. I don't know that the link is gonna work.
If not, I can share my screen and do it.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a working link, so I'll stop sharing. Thanks.
All right. Can everyone see that?
Because students have a lot.
Sorry, Coach.
Sorry, there's a little bit of, there's.
Mike Harper, an econ major who piles on the pressure. Grammarly can help her stress lift.
Hello and welcome to Teachings in Education with Frank Avella. The history of special education. In the United States today, all students with disabilities have the right to special education services and a free public education. These children are protected by laws. Students classified as having disabilities are afforded accommodations and modifications. Accommodations are related to access of content, while modifications allow for changes to content. No doubt, these students benefit greatly from them today. However, this wasn't always the case. It was only with the help of certain advocacy groups. These advocacy groups were usually formed by parents of students with special needs and other members of that community. The advocacy groups lobbied and fought for these children by bringing their plight to the public eye, as well as putting pressure on local and state politicians. They got the public involved. Now, let's look at a quick outline of events beginning in the early 1800s that led to the achievements of today. Years ago, most students with disabilities did not attend school, and in most cases, they were not accepted to schools. There are exceptions where some parents would have to pay money to get their child into private schools or pay for private tutors. Let's move along to the 1850s, where a growing number of isolated schools for students with disabilities were available. These schools were mostly in rural areas, but were moving in the right direction. Moving toward the 1880s, we sort of took a step back for disabled children. Scientist Francis Goltin spread the ideas of eugenics, which discussed the sterilization of disabled individuals. Individuals with disabilities began being placed in institutions, many of which provided conditions similar to a jail. Let's fast forward to the 1920s, and the good news is that more and more children with disabilities were finding their way into public schools. It almost all were in separate classes and kept in separate rooms. Then, to an important time, the 1970s, which is really where special education started. Laws were put in place for funding for special education students. And Public Law 94142 was passed as the foundation for special education. Continuing to the 1990s, where important laws such as IDEA of 1990 was passed, and students had the right to general education curriculum. And if you look at schools today, we see a push towards what is called the inclusion movement, which basically ensures all students with disabilities have the opportunities to participate with non-disabled general education peers. Right now, I want to say thank you for your time. Please like and share this video. Subscribe.
All right, thank you so much. Julie, do you want to get back on and drive it? Thank you. Well, I appreciate everyone taking a minute to to look at that video, and I think it is a snapshot of where 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 we've been and how we got to where we're at right now. And as you can see, you know, our legislation for for supporting students with special needs and learning differences is fairly new. 1975 really wasn't that long ago. And we're still working on it as there's been various reauthorizations over the years. And, you know, we're faced with a lot of different barriers still that a lot of advocacy groups and including school districts are pushing up against in order to ensure that students have equal access. including school districts are pushing up against in order to ensure that students have equal access and have a right to a free and appropriate education. So. We're on to the next slide. Great. Guiding principles. So I I wanted to highlight a few principles, guiding principles of IDEA that stand out as far as being a part of the legislation and supporting our students. Next slide. So we've talked about FAP already, free and appropriate education. Free and appropriate public education, excuse me. And what this means is that special education related services are to be provided as described in an IEP and under public supervision to students at no cost to parents. Parents' rights include information about the availability of FAP, including all program options and all available alternative programs, both public and non-public. Next slide, please. We're gonna have, if we don't mind, trustee Duran, can you read this slide? It's about least restrictive environment.
LRE for students with disabilities is placement in a setting that is as similar as possible to the one attended by general education peers without disabilities and in which the child can make reasonable progress toward meeting his or her IEP goals.
Thank you so much. You know, I'm starting to see that theme that was emerging throughout the history of special education of really thinking intentional about having students included within general education versus segregating them. And so when we're, when we enter that concept about least restricted environment, it's, it's giving a tool to the team to really think intentionally about how a student is going to be educated. Next slide. In addition to more, more information about least restrictive environment, the setting for a student with a disability may or not be be in general education. And we need to be think, thinking about that. Classes and services in the public school must be located close proximity to other students without disabilities. And there are circumstances where where students' needs outweigh the benefit of being in a general education class. And they require more intensive supports, but this is done intentionally and it's done through the thought process of educational benefit for understanding the student's needs and weighing harmful effects. And and really always thinking about how we can bring a student back through less restrictive supports as in order for them to have more access. There's an array of placement options. We have everything from students that have consultation to students that are in specialized academic instruction pullout supports or classes, all the way into students that have to receive their support services through a non-public school setting, state schools and hospital or home programs. Next slide, please. So I referenced this terminology, educational benefit, and it slips off my tongue really easily because I live and breathe it. But really, what educational benefit is, it's this con, this concept of free and appropriate education and least restricted environment. And so IDEA requires that that IEPs are developed by the team that results in progress over time, really targeting their unique needs, weighing harmful effects. And it's, it's analyzed every year at least in order for the student to make progress. Cause we will learn when we go through the the IEP that, you know, we have, we have areas of need that are defined, that are defined through present levels and we have goals. And those goals are really about helping that student make progress towards the general education environment. And it may be either through the general education curriculum or access to the environment for for being able to be educated with their same age peers, non-disabled peers. Next slide, please. Educational benefit continues is it's it's broad analysis. It's not, it's not easy and it needs to be done intentionally. And I work a lot with our teachers with regards to this. Let's look at the data. Assessments provide us data. They allow us to build those present levels to really understand where that student's at in comparison to to their same age peers and gives us a baseline for being able to develop goals and easily and calculate those goals to see how a student can make progress within a year. And then we also have to think about, was the IEP implemented when we think about educational benefit? You know, unfortunately, you know, like, you know, our, our, our our landscape of of a special education, it's difficult. It's what, what, did, did everyone, you know, implement the IEP? Was that service provider there that time? And really looking at that, because if everything was in place, the hope would be that students making progress. The reality is sometimes not everything was in place. And we need to analyze that so we can figure out, do we owe the student compensatory education? Do we need to do things differently because the student's not responding to to what we, we implemented? And then really just looking at, did they, did they make progress and gain educational benefit? And if not, rethinking as a team what we can do differently so that they can make educational benefit. It's, this is a concept that, you know, differs from a lot of other concepts. We're, we're not looking at maximum potential. We're really looking at helping students gain access and building their skills so they can do so. In order to, next slide, please. And, you know, we're gonna go through this in a little bit more detail later, but there's been various legislations over the years that have given us insight into, you know, how do we look at educational benefit? And so I want to put a pause on on looking at these two bullet points because when we get into to the section of educational benefit, we get to go a little bit deeper and talking about some of the the lawsuits that occurred, both the nineteen eighty-two rally lawsuit, as well as the two thousand seventeen Endrew. And that's E N D G D R E W lawsuit that really paved the way for rethinking of how we look at educational benefit. One was looking at some educational progress, and that was the rally. And the other one was looking, being able to clarify and really think through, how do we reach students' maximum potential? So it has changed in a lot of regards with regards to how students are are considered in order to receive educational benefit. Next slide, please. The IEP, you know, I think, President Hinckley, would you mind reading this?
Sure.
Thanks.
Individualized education program. The IEP is a legal document which must be developed for each child who is found eligible for special education services. Student's IEP helps ensure that their identified special learning needs are supported by special education services and that the appropriateness of the services is evaluated regularly. The IEP specifies services to be provided by the school district. It describes anticipated long-term goals for your child and serves as a blueprint for instruction in the school environment. It is not a daily lesson plan and does not specify the instructional strategies, curriculum or staff used to implement the IEP. These may change over time.
Thank you so much. I think it's just important to highlight that, you know, the IEP really is, is the blueprint. It's not a lesson plan. The instructional methodologies from our credentialed staff really look at how students can make progress on their goals with this, with the training and and tools that they have. But it's, this is a good, good starting point for us whenever we get into the really the granular, granular level of what an IEP is and the different components. Next slide, please. Child find. This is a really important piece. There's, there's a lot of students out there that are struggling. There's a lot of students out there that may have an educational-based disability. And, you know, the, the way the law is positioned is we have a duty in order to be able to locate students with disabilities. And that is where child find comes in. And so the purpose of child finds is ensure that every child with disability is identified, located and evaluated. Primary purpose of special education evaluation is to confirm a suspected disability. It's not to generate data on a student's learning profile, but it's really to look at, does the student build, does the student have a educational disability that requires special education? There's a legal standard that applies regardless of the severity of disability. There's an affirmative ongoing duty to identify, locate and evaluate all children with suspected disabilities residing in the state who need special education. Our SELPA provides our guidance on what our child find initiatives are. And we are always seeking out students and hoping that if there are families or there are teachers or there's community members that have concerns that, you know, they understand their rights to be able to make a referral and also leverage some of the other pre-referral activities, but not to be persuaded not to also execute their right to be able to identify, to to make a referral for special education. In addition, for California, you know, our law is a little bit more extensive when it comes to the child find based. On our law, we also, you know, look for students that are homeless, wards of the state and children that are attending private schools. And for instance, I just left a private school meeting with the SELPA, which is really informing our, our private school within our, our SELPA community about special education and child find. And so that if they have any concerns, they know the processes to be able to alert the district of service where that private school is at in order to be able to notify that district of service that there may be a student that has a disability. We have, next slide, please. So just to recap, there's two main components. There's general public notice responsibility and our obligation to child find. And so our general public notice is to inform and educate the public. And education code obligates each SELPA, as I mentioned, to establish child, child find policies and procedures. And our obligation to to specific children is triggered when a district knows, has reason to suspect or should know that a student may have a disability. And that could come from a teacher having ongoing concerns about a student's performance despite various different interventions. It could come from a parent having concerns and feeling they need more information. It could come from a variety of different reasons. But having parents aware that this is an opportunity for them to be able to to evaluate their student if they have reasons to suspect that they may have an educational disability. Can you go to the next slide, please? Procedural safeguards. IDE provides legal protections to students and parents called procedural safeguards. They spell out everything that the the family has a right to with regards to their, their student and protecting them and being part of the IEP process. And we give these out whenever a student is referred for special education. We give this out whenever a parent asks for a copy. Every time that we we give an assessment plan out either for initial evaluation or additional evaluation later in the year or at the triennial mark, which we'll get to, is every three years we evaluate students within special education. We give them their procedural safeguards and it's a packet and I provide it as a supporting document to this workshop. And, you know, much, much like an IEP and much like this, this presentation, it's cumbersome to look at. And so we're gonna break it down a little bit later of what procedural safeguards look at to a certain extent. I didn't get too, too in depth, in depth with regards to procedural safeguards. But just a thirty thousand foot overview. And another time that we give our procedural safeguards is whenever there is a decision to make a removal or constitutes a change of placement. So it's really trying to, to, to arm the families with information that they know that they can how they can navigate the, the system to advocate for their student and ensure that their rights are upheld. Can you go to the next slide, please? You know, I, I, I wrote due process here, and that is part of the procedural safeguards. But I realized when I was reviewing the slides earlier that that was, I intended to go in in deep about due process and then decided that would be a different presentation, but forgot to change these next two slides. So this is still about procedural safeguards. Due process is part of the procedural safeguards. And I want to talk to everyone about due process and what that looks like, but I think that's for a conversation for a later date. Today, I really wanted to focus on some of the fundamentals of IDEA. And due process is, I think, a much bigger conversation. But they, parent, but in brief, parents do have the right to request an impartial due process hearing regarding the identification, assessment and educational placement of their child and the provision of FAP. So what that means is they have the right to be able to, to make a file, filing with the, the State Department of Education and say, and go through a process that we refer to as due process. And there's various different layers to it, from a resolution session to mediation to a hearing. And the idea is there's being a conflict between what the district is saying or their failure to do something and with the family feels is been missed or what their, their student needs and the district isn't doing. And it really has a a support component to it to help mitigate any grievances or complaints before going to a hearing, because a hearing is pretty cumbersome, very costly emotionally, as well as financially for both parties. And so our due process procedures outline various mechanisms to support families and districts to come to a compromise before going to a hearing. And within our SELPA, we, we try to execute a lot of what we call alternative dispute resolution activities even before going into to a due process hearing. But I'd like to talk about due process a little bit more at a different date. But just to to sum up, the request for a due process hearing must be filed within two years from the date that you knew or should have known about any allegations or actions that that forms the basis of a due process complaint. This slide really is, is, is more about procedural safeguards and I think that where I missed stuff a little bit, so I apologize. With regards to procedural safeguards and not due process, school districts must obtain parental consent before conducting initials evaluations of students or exiting students from special education. They must provide prior notice to parents before initiating or changing or refusing to change identification, evaluation or educational placement. And we'll talk a little bit more about prior notice a little bit later and what that really means. And then school districts must provide parents upon request a, with information about independent education evaluations, including where they can be obtained. And so earlier to, you know, Vice President Dos's questions pertaining to the provisions under eligibility categories, there can be times where there's disagreements with a district's evaluation for a student special education evaluation. And the parent, and parents have a right to request what we call an independent education evaluation. It's a third-party evaluator that can be not biased in being able to look at the student's needs and make their recommendation for for eligibility as well as how that student can support their education. So, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that later also. Next slide, please. School districts must consider a, an independent education evaluation and be able to make the determination of whether or not the student's information or data that comes out of that evaluation is congruent with meeting eligibility or the recommendations that are provided from the assessor so the team can make informed decisions for that student's program. Parent consent is required before any IEP is being implemented. And there's, it can be hard to to sign a document if you don't understand everything. And so a lot of work goes into trying to help families understand what the document of an IEP is and being able to have parental consent. And as mentioned before, parents have the right to file compliance complaints when school districts do not provide services and supports agreed to them to by the IEP team. There's different ways to do this. One is through, through the Office of Administrative Hearing, through due process. The other is through the Compliance Complaint Office, through the Special Education Division in the State Department of Education. And as mentioned again, you know, parents have a right to formal legal process of due process hearings. Next slide, please. Okay, before we go into the IEP plan process, doing a time check, it's about six twenty-three. Any questions about the special education law overview and some of the guiding principles that were presented? Excellent. Well, I'm just gonna keep, oh.
I think trustee Duran had her hand up.
Okay.
After big, I kind of wanted to ask you in general, you talked about the advocates that are out there. Does that also include folks that are really pushing Congress to provide more monies to each school district? Do you kind of know the status of that? And is there anything we as a, as board can do to advocate for that as well?
Excellent question, trustee Duran. You know, our SELPA director, Katie Babcock, is on the forefront with working with the, the state SELPA and working with the state and being able to. and working with the state and being able to, to, to help with a coalition to advocate for more monies. We've done it in the past. We've had families and board members write letters. And so I look to our SLPA to provide us that guidance of when that best time to do it is. Because there are those windows of opportunity. And Katie Babcock, our SLPA director, lets the directors know when we need to seek support from our community. Because there are good windows to do that. So I will make sure that I inform the boards as well as the rest of the Albany community when those moments come up so that we can come together as Albany to help advocate.
And just one other question about assessments and testing. To what degree are those aligned? For example, our state testing, which shows our students in special ed are not doing well. To what degree do we align that with each and every child, individual child in looking at those results, be it, be it the fast track assessment we now have or be it the state testing?
I, I love, I love that question and, you know, I, I think, you know, I'm also thinking about another workshop that we could do is like unpacking a psychoeducation evaluation to really see what that looks like. Because one thing I remember learning in graduate school is, you know, you know, one piece of data alone isn't telling. We need to look at multiple data points to make informed decisions. And so we look at this, the statewide assessments, we look at the local assessments and we integrate that as a component, as a data point within our reports to make informed decisions for eligibility. And I think, you know, we're, we're going to get to a place where it's going to get even better because we have a lot of great work that we're doing within our district with regards to FastBridge and aligning them with various different support structures and really thinking intentional about intervention supports as well as database instruction. But it has been a, you know, a common practice whenever we are looking at eligibility for a student. We look at statewide assessments, local assessments, as well as any of the norm reference, standard-based assessments that we conduct. And we consider all that information and that helps inform, does a student meet one of the thirteen criteria?
Vice President Dos has his, has his hand up too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question around, around the, the law and consent in terms of special education. So from, well, actually, I'll come back to that. My kind of quick question is if there's a student who would benefit from special education or needs to be placed in the program, but the parent does not want their student to be in special education. What are the rules and regulations around that? Like if they can't actually be successful in the regular class environment, but they have a parent or guardian that doesn't want them to be in special education. What are the, the rules around that is my first question.
You know, that's a great question. And, you know, in the state of California, you know, you know, families have the right. And we, we can't tell families how, how to rear their child's development. We can inform, we can educate. But if we were to find a student eligible and the family does not sign, we would provide prior written notice and say, this is, we feel like your student does require. And that's the, that's the technical piece that we, what we do. The relational, relational piece that we would do is we would talk to the family, continue to outreach, really try to understand what their concerns were with regards to special education. Whether it's stigma, whether it's just not understanding the, the complexity of special education and also looking at other support structures within our school system that the student could benefit from in the event that the family was really adamant about not being in special education. And so there is, there are other support structures, both universal structures at our different schools to support students that have varying learning needs. And then there's also the Rehabilitation Act of, you know, the American Disabilities Act that students can have, if they have a physical or mental impairment, can have a Section 504 Plan developed so that they can have a floor of opportunity to access their school environment. I just try to come from it, from a, you know, relational perspective because I think if, you know, we come from it as this is what you need versus help me understand where you're coming from. We, we just create tension. And our purpose is to hopefully get to aligned so that we're both on the same page because both of our objectives is to support the student. And so if a family is, you know, refusing special education, even though the student is eligible, it's nice to have an understanding of why and hopefully build a relationship and rapport so that they can feel comfortable discussing that.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. President Hinckley, I had a second question. Do we have time?
That's really up to Director Biggs.
Yeah, I think this is, I think this is great. Vice President Dos, please.
Oh, okay, perfect. Thank you. So my second kind of follow-up question is kind of a two-part, which is I think that there's often confusion around 504 and IEP. So I'm wondering if we're going to talk about that later or if we could talk a little bit about the difference between 504 Plan and IEP for students. And then my second part of that question is is there, or will we talk about it sometime this evening about the proper way to address our students that are in special education? Just to make sure that everybody's kind of using the correct terminology, you know, because you'll hear, I don't want to use the incorrect terminology to, as an example. So I'll just say that, can you kind of go over that a little bit just to make sure that everybody's kind of being respectful and referring to the community, you know, the way that that they're supposed to, I guess for lack of better words.
No, I, I know, no, you know, Vice President Dos, that's really important and it's about awareness because we need to use student-first language versus language that really labels students and really perpetuates. It's, it's discriminatory. They're not sped students. They're not IEP students. They're students with learning differences that require, you know, different supports. And that's not in the presentation this evening, but I love that, you know, maybe at the, you know, Q and A and discussion, we can discuss more. And with regards to the, the difference, differences between special education and 504, I'd love to come back to the board and talk about that. I did not include that in this presentation because I really wanted to focus on what is special education. And both special education and 504 are unique vehicles that have some similarities. But I, and we can have another meeting about 504s. But I really want to be intentional about giving the information to the board for this workshop about special education. And I'd love to come back in another time to talk about 504. And also always welcome to have conversations outside of, of a meeting to be able to discuss it with the board. But I think it'd also be good for our community.
Okay, yeah, so I mean, at, at some point, if we could, you know, have that discussion and then I think it would be beneficial to have it at some point for the community to hear as well. Because I think that there's like often confusion around that and, and so I think it'd be beneficial to talk about it at some point. So, thank you.
I'm putting it in my notes as a follow-up. I think it's a great idea. Thank you so much, Vice President Dos.
All right.
Can we go to the next slide, Julie? The Individual Education Plan Process. So I want to walk everybody or let's walk together through the IEP process. Next slide. Trustee Lyra, can you, can you read that slide to me? To the, to everybody, sorry.
Of course, yeah. Several steps are required for a student to be identified for special education services. Number one, referral. Number two, assessment plan. Number three, assessment period. Number four, individualized education program. Team meeting to determine eligibility. IEP development. IEP implementation. Seven, annual review, IEP program review. And eight, triennial assessment, which is an eligibility evaluation.
Thank you so much, student trustee Lyra. I'm just, I'm looking at this as a, as a, if, as a parent and I'm thinking, oh my goodness, this is a marathon. There's a lot of things that are involved with this. This is going to be really difficult and it is. It's not an easy system to navigate and special education is not a it's, it is a way to fail model in a lot of different ways. And we really go through a laborious process to ensure that we're doing right by ensuring the student requires this level of support. And so we're going to go through the different steps. And I'll, I'll speak to some of the other supports that can also be executed at the school district, at the school site level. Either before a referral for special education or what I like to tell families is concurrent with a special education evaluation. Because the one thing I don't want is I don't want students to, to wait to get some support. And there is a lot of amazing support that our schools have in order to, to support struggling learners. Next slide, please. So this next slide really is just the infographic for your reference and it goes through the process and some of the timelines. Whenever we get a request for assessment, district has fifteen days to respond. Once we get the assessment plan back, we have sixty days to assess a student. And then we, we hold an IEP meeting. And if the student's eligible, we develop an IEP, we implement that IEP. And then every year, we have an annual IEP meeting in order to see progress on goals that were, were agreed to. And then every three years, we hold a three-year evaluation, which we do updated assessments to determine if the student is still eligible for special education and requires special education. So that's a, that's a, that's a brief little overview for your records. Next slide, please. You know, this is a lot of information here, but I think some of the biggest parts to think about is that, you know, a parent has a right to request a special education assessment anytime. You know, if, if they put it in writing, if they email a counselor, if they email a teacher and they want to request, it's the district's obligation to be able to respond in fifteen days. We could not deny that request. I'd have to say, I think in Albany, you know, there's been a handful of times that we've ever denied a request for an assessment. If it was really determined that it was not, not necessary and we provide justification for why we think it's not necessary, but we continue to monitor the student's progress in the event that things, you know, start to unravel so that we can come in, start to assess and determine eligibility. But, you know, we, we try to exhaust our options within our, you know, general education setting first. It's not something that's required, but we try to. We really think about that concept of least restrictive environment and the universal supports that are available to all students. And so, you know, we have a lot of pre-referral activities that are different schools from general education counseling to various different accommodations through, that may be developed through a student success team meeting. But again, those are not, you don't have to exhaust them. If a parent requests a special education evaluation, they have a right and the district has a right to respond in fifteen days. And most often or not, we're going to respond with an assessment plan. Next slide, please. So the step is initiated whenever we get a referral from personnel, parent, student, or students, or studies, a, a school study team or a school success team. SST is a terminology that, you know, has, has different names, but it's the same idea. It's a, a, a group of individuals, parents, teachers, and other staff that come together to brainstorm how we can support a student if there's any challenges, either social, emotional, behavioral, or academic. So before getting to, to thinking about a more restrictive process like a special education evaluation. But again, this is not a requirement. It's just best practices to go through this. The step ends for referral when the parents are in firm writing for the district's intent to refer a child for special education. Or, and whenever a district sends a request to, to assess or if the parent writes in requesting assessment. So it can come from the district. There can be teachers that say, I'm really concerned. And they make a referral to our office and then we will follow up with the families to notify them that a referral has been made. And that we'll be sending an assessment plan and we'd like to walk them through it because it can be a little, a little awkward just to get something in your mail of what is this assessment plan with it and, and being blindsided. So we really try to, to work with our, our, our staff to, to get a little bit more out front of it and talking to our families so that they're aware and they can engage within the process. And then again, like I said before, if we receive a request, we'll process it. We'll most likely call the family to determine what are the areas of concern if that wasn't very apparent within the, within the referral request. And while the parent doesn't have to tell us what the referral is for, it's helpful so that we can construct an assessment plan. Because what we'll see is these assessment plans give us the ability to look at certain areas. And we can't look at certain areas without parents' consent. Next slide, please. The assessment plan. And so whenever we get the, the request, we'll develop an assessment plan based on the referral concerns. You know, and it's, you know, we, we, we have our, you know, our, our different specialists that look at the referral and they help co-construct the assessment plan with parent inputs. And we'll look, it could be anything from, you know, academic achievement to health and, you know, health background to intellectual development or conceptual abilities, social, emotional well-being, speech and language, fine motor and adaptive behavior. There, there's a, there's a list and it's not an exhaustive list because there's other areas that aren't listed within our assessment plans that we can also consider such as assistive technology, teacher with a deaf or hard of hearing, orientation, mobility, adaptive physical education. It's whatever the area of need is and we will assess. And so it really is looking at that referral concerns, following up with the, the referral agent to really understand so that we can develop this assessment plan. And then the plan sent to the family. And as I mentioned before, we cannot assess unless we have parent consent. So we send the parents their procedural safeguards so that they are informed from the get-go of what their rights are with regards to consent to assess. And that if they are eligible for special education, what are the provisions of safeguards available to them? Next slide, please. This is a little bit more redundant, but it's more information for you. I think I mentioned to, mentioned it already. It's not just done at the initial assessment, you know, consent is, for an assessment is done at any time assessment period. So from an initial assessment for special education to also that three-year evaluation or at least by three years, because we can evaluate sooner. Nothing prohibits, prohibits anyone on the IEP team to say, we need more information. Let's do an updated assessment. Because an assessment really is just a snapshot in time and things can change. And hopefully things are changing for the better, but for, for a lot of the times, things aren't changing for the better that require us to assess earlier to think through what other supports we can put in place to better support the student's needs that we didn't do on the onset. So we're, we're continually analyzing this annually. And then at least every three years, through standardized assessments, doing a deeper dive through assessments. But as I mentioned, we can do it sooner. Next slide, please. So this is a copy. I don't know if you can see that. This is, I wanted to give everyone an idea of what it looks like. This is what our assessment plans look like and I don't know if you can zoom in on it, Julie, or not, but you know, this is, this is not breaking FERPA or confidentiality. This is a, a, this is super, this is super duper. He is a fake person that we use for training purposes within our, within our data system called CACE, where all of our special education records are, are created. And this would be an assessment plan that we would send out to, to a family. And you can see some of the areas that we would, we would look at, you know, there's identifying information. This would be for an initial evaluation. And if you can scroll down a little bit, those are the evaluated, valuation areas. And it also includes the examiner's title. And this is just a mock-up. Everyone's going to be a little bit different as far as what we're looking at. We have a lot of students that are speech and language only, that may only require language, speech, communication development. We always like to include health because it gives us the ability to do a hearing and vision screening as well as collect some information that may either rule in or rule out a student being eligible for special education. So other areas that I didn't mention before is post-secondary transition. And that's something we'll talk about a little bit later. Whenever a student turns sixteen and is in special education, we have a duty to start working with them on their own goals. Not just their goals for thinking through how to access their education, but thinking about what they want to do in post-secondary life. And that's looking at what I want to do for employment, what I want to do for education. And for some students, what do I want to do for independent living? Do you want to scroll down? And so all the boxes marked off will, would, would be what the district is proposing for a set, assessment. Scroll back up, Julie, I'm so sorry. Scroll back up, Julie, I'm so sorry. I want to just emphasize this piece right here. So if you look at the very bottom area. You know, this, the person of contact for this assessment plan is, is myself. But it most likely would be a special education teacher, a school psychologist, or a speech-language therapist or a program specialist. Um, and so if a family receives this, they have the opportunity to reach out to that individual, to get some more information and talk through it. Um, and then there's three areas for a parent to be able to check off, either that they consent. Um, either that they don't consent, or that they would like some additional information also considered. And those additional informations may be, you know, um, contacting outside therapists. Maybe reviewing an independent education evaluation or private assessment that was completed. And that's just an opportunity for, for parents to be able to provide more information um, when they consent to an assessment. So we wanted to just highlight that there. If you can scroll down. And for an initial assessment, we talked about prior written notice. And this is our prior written notice page. So this is what families get whenever a student's um, being referred for special education. Either from a parent, from a school employee, um, and we send home an assessment plan. We also send home prior written notice. And it provides us some justification of why we're um, putting this assessment plan out. And sometimes it's just going to say parent request. I put some detail here that there's an evaluation from a parent referral. Um, and some details uh, that I just, I, I, I put together. And then going, going down there, you know, looking at some of the records. I referenced an SST meeting that the, that was, that was done early in September. Again, this is just fake. Um, and then the, nothing was used to, to, to reject this. Because it was a parent referral and I provided some more information with regards to the SST. For, for the family as well as for the evaluators to know. So we can go back to the, if you want to go to the next one. Assessment periods. Pretty big, as I mentioned before, we have fifteen days to respond to requests and we have sixty days to do an assessment. Sixty days is, is, is not a long time. Um, we have to do in, you know, interviews, observations and direct assessments and then also write a report. But as soon as we get that assessment plan, that's when the clock starts ticking. I put together a nice sixty-day calendar for my, for my team. So that they have a quick reference guide of know, to know when they receive consent to assess. Sixty days out, that's when the IEP is due. And we're really wanting to make sure that we're in compliance with the sixty-day timeline. Because it is, it's the law, but also we want to be able to get in there. So that we can either identify a student that has a disability or refine a student's program. Um, so that they can make more adequate progress and, and really refine some of their goals. Um, and as I said before, classroom observations, informal assessments, maybe some uh, you know, review of records. Um, maybe some dynamic assessments, you know, some teachers or psychologists may have students to do different activities that aren't norm-based. Just to see how they're performing visual motor or um, being able to do problem solving. So that they can use that as anecdotal information within their, their, um, their discussion within their reports. And contribute to the analysis of all the data to make an informed decision. Um, the start, this ends at the sixty-day timeline and when the report is written and the IEP is held. And um, you know, this is, you know, so far, we're on step three and it's cumbersome enough. Um, think about being a parent who's gone through step three and is waiting for that IEP meeting. Um, we really want them to be informed and to participate in that IEP meeting. And so we try to get assessment plans, assessment reports, even in draft version to the families in advance of the meeting. So that they can review. Um, I, I tell our school psychologist um, to contact families and to review some of the report prior. Because it's a lot of information to go through. Um, and when you're at a meeting that's only for an hour or an hour and a half. Um, it's hard to digest everything that's being thrown at you. So we really want to have parents to have more uh, participation. And so there's some more proactive approaches that we're trying to, to um, deploy within our department. So parents have that information and contribute to actually the discussion at the meeting versus trying to interpret everything. Um, and then um, make sense and, and make decisions on, in the moment. Next slide please. Um, this is the IEP. There we go. Step four, IEP eligibility determination. You know, we're not going to go through this because we already have really, but really it's coming together. With looking at the reports and determining does a student meet one of the thirteen criteria. If they do, the team, and that's just not one person. That's the, that's the general education teacher that's there, that's the parent that's there, that's the administrator that's there, that's the assessors. Really consider all that data and say, okay, does the student require specialized instruction? Or can they, you know, access their education despite being eligible for one of the thirteen categories? Do they have the compensatory skills to be able to do this with accommodations alone? Um, and if, and that's a decision that needs to be made as a team. Um, and so I usually like to go around the table and ask everybody, you know, what are your, what are your thoughts and get a consensus? Um, if a student is eligible, we then develop an IEP. Um, I like our team to provide a draft IEP in anticipation. If the student may be eligible, but sometimes it may not be the case and we may have to come back in a couple of weeks. Because more, some information may come out in that initial IEP meeting um, that we weren't aware of, that we need to consider. Um, or we want to add into a draft IEP proposal. And then if a student isn't eligible, we, we, it's not, you know, we're not just closing the books, we're thinking how are we supporting the student? And so we're really thinking about different ways that student can have access through some of the universal general education supports. Um, and so we usually like to have our school counselors also present at meetings. Um, and the, the site administrators for the elementary level. So that they can be part of that process and helping connecting students up with some of the universal supports. Um, and this process really ends whenever the, the, the parents sign either. Um, you know, they agree that the student's eligible or that they agree that the student's not eligible. Next slide please. Um, IEP development. This is a big process and it's based on that data. It's looking at the areas of need. Um, and being able to develop uh, that, which we recall, called to as present levels. What is the student's needs? Um, we consider parent concerns, we consider, consider student strengths. We also consider, you know, what are the areas of difficulty that the student is exhibiting that requires special education? And from that, we develop smart goals for that student to be able to, to work on throughout the year. Um, and then from those, from those goals, accommodations and um, related services are recommended. Um, as they've been calculated for that student to require in order to make adequate progress over that year to meet those goals. And again, we need parent consent before we can implement the IEP. And it, sometimes we don't come to agreement, we have to come back to the table, we have a lot of conversations. Parents also have the right to sign IEPs with exceptions. They might not agree to certain things. Um, and they may agree to other things and that's okay too. And that's part of the procedural safeguards and our team is equipped for helping families um, work through that process. Um, of not being in agreement, because we may not all be satisfied on the uh, a, a particular goal. Um, but the service recommendation seems appropriate and we want to be able to continue. Or we may not be in agreement of one accommodation or one, um, one service while everything else is okay. And so families can always sign with exception. Next slide please. This is the implementation of the IEP. It's a lot easier said than done. Um, our, you know, our special education teachers, our speech-language pathologists. They uh, are what we refer to as case managers, depending on the eligibility category. And um, they, they implement the IEP. They look at the IEP. They make sure that the general education teachers have what we call an IEP at a glance. That includes all their accommodations for being able to access their education, includes their goals and includes their services. And so it really is, it's kind of the um, it's the Cliff Notes of the IEP. Because we'll see IEPs can go from anywhere from fifteen to, you know, thirty-five pages and it's, it's a lot. It's a lot to read. And so this is an abbreviated version for our general education teachers to be able to review. And be able to implement some of the, the substantive components um, without all of the, the, the granular detail. Um, but again, the case manager is always there to provide more information. And especially, and the general education teacher can always request to review the comprehensive IEP document if they would like. But it really is that abbreviated version that gives them the um, the, the critical pieces for them to be able to adhere to. To ensure that student has access. Um, and so we implement it as soon as a stu- we have consent. And uh, that starts with services, it starts with accommodations. Um, and it's, you know, the step ends when there's a new IEP that's approved from the family. Or that we're in a triennial reevaluations, determine that the student's no longer eligible and they've graduated from special education. Next slide please. Every year we have a IEP review meeting. Um, it's, I, I refer to it as an annual meeting. There's some changes within our state and they'd like to throw curveballs at us and just change up language. Um, it is now just called a program review meeting. Um, but we meet once annually, but we can always meet sooner through an amendment meeting. Which is also referred to as a program review meeting to make uh, things more complicated. Um, but we meet at least annually and the idea of meeting annually is to get progress on goals. And I think I talked about that before, most, so we won't go into in detail. But this is the opportunity for um, every service provider to give updates on the goals. Um, general education teachers, feedback and the student's progress within their class that are embedded within the present levels. And for us to, as a team, to look at the present levels in consideration of the progress on goals and make new goals for the student. Or make a determination that we need to do more assessment. Because we feel like um, you know, the student's making really great progress. Um, and doesn't need the support or the student is um, regressing. And we need to do something different and we need to get a more of a uh, micro lens on what, what the issue is and we may need to do more assessments. So um, this is, ends whenever there's a new IEP signed from the parents. Um, or when the student is no longer eligible or graduate, graduates from schools. At any point in time, any team member can call an IEP. And I think that's really important. Parents need to know that. Team members need to know that because, you know, as one of my wonderful special day class teachers at Albany High School years ago. Used to say to me, when I was starting out as a program specialist, he's like, Brian, this is much more of an art than a science. Um, and you know that, I, I, I had a hard time because I'm very rigid in a lot of different ways. And I see it as a balance between the two now. It is an art. Because we, you know, a- as our students are ever, ever evolving, we have to be nimble. And we need to be creative about how we're going to support their development and their, and their needs that, that, that change. And so we need to come back to the table. We need to meet and, and to think through how students can better make progress. Um, and access their education and be independent. And so there's an art to being able to, to be nimble and be creative. Um, while also the science of adhering to some of the, the safeguards in place for students. So, this is something that always stuck out to me. And so I, I, I know a lot of, you know, people, you know, I always say, let's have a meeting. Because I think the more meetings we have, it shows the, the better due diligence that we're doing to supporting the student. Because we didn't get it right at the first time. And that's okay. Because we're, 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 we're hypothesizing a lot of the times and trying things out. And sometimes you need to walk a little bit and, and choose to realize that it's not the right fit and trying something different. Um, next slide please. Um, I mentioned this before, reevaluation, formal assessments. It's like the initial evaluation, we're getting updated assessments on standardized norm-based measures. To really make informed decisions about eligibility. And as I mentioned earlier, the annual IEP is no longer called annual, the reevaluation is no longer called reevaluation. Um, and initial is no longer called initial, it's all called eligibility evaluation. Again, the state is just changing things on us to make it a little bit more confusing. But the reality is every three years, or if not sooner, we reevaluate a student and it's now called an eligibility evaluation. Next slide. Who, special education continuum services. Before we go in, any questions about the IEP process?
I don't see any.
Excellent. Um, and I'm just doing a time check. It's seven o'clock. Let's dive, let's dive into uh, special education continuum of services. Um, so a- as I mentioned, you know, we really think about the least restrictive environment. And there's an array of supports that can be provided for students. Um, and the supports are really based on how that support student is going to make progress in their goals. And accessing uh, the general education curriculum um, and or um, their specific um, needs. And so we, we look at those circumstances, we weigh harmful effects. Um, as, as the, the video showed earlier, we're always thinking about inclusive supports. And so we're always thinking about how we can get that student in general education. How can we get a student to graduate from special education? So that's the lens of least restrictive that I take, but least restrictive doesn't always mean general education. Some students' needs outweigh um, being able to access general education. And we need to be able to provide more direct self-contained supports. And that's okay. Um, we just need to be able to honor that and be able to, to build that student's skills up. So that we can bring them down the, 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 the level of restriction within the array or the continuum of services. Um, you want to go to the next slide please? And so I, I put in a nice little slide here just to kind of give you an idea. I'm not going to read everything, it's there for your reference. But some of the array, the continuum of supports include accommodations. And that's, you know, how do we make alterations for the student to, 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 to access the, the grade level standard? We're not, we're not modifying it, we're not lowering the standard. We're just thinking about different strategies for that student to be able to have access to that standard. Um, modifications on the other hand is we're looking at being able to change that course sequence for that student to, to access that standard. We're not meeting the same standard whenever we're dealing with modifications to the general education curriculum. Um, the academic curriculum, related services, and we'll go over this. There's an array of them everywhere from speech, language, deaf or hard of hearing. Um, counseling and guidance to uh, one of the, the most prevalent uh, services of specialized academic instruction. Uh, we have students that receive consultation, push and support from paraeducators. That are supervised by a special education credential teacher to, to pull out support. Either by a special education teacher or a uh, paraeducator that's supervised by that. A paraeducator that's supervised by a special education teacher to um, even to classes. So we have some students that may have um, a class that they're pulled out for, for content areas of English. Or an elective class when we get into the older grades, such as a studies, a resource lab. Um, and we also have a special day class program. And this is for our students with more moderate to, to severe learning differences. And they're really not working towards uh, the, the same state uh, standards as far as curriculum. But they're really working towards their own individual goals, towards um, building independence, pre-academic skills, activities of daily living. Um, and then we also have state special schools. We have state, state special schools for students that are blind or visually impaired. And we also have state special schools for students that are deaf or hard of hearing. Um, which are great resources and the state special schools offer programs for the students that are not just uh, within the school year. But also um, throughout the year for extracurricular activities as well as camps, which is really great. Um, when a student's uh, is unable to be, uh, needs are unable to be met within the school, the public school system. After considering, you know, an array of different supports for that student. Um, the, the next assist um, level of restriction would be a non-public school. And these are schools that provide more of a therapeutic milieu for students based on specific areas of disability. There's schools that um, really focus on the eligibility category of autism. There's schools that really focus on the eligibility categories of students with learning disabilities, other health impairment. But you know, the district has um, exhausted their extensive supports. Um, for that student to make adequate progress within the public integrated facility. And we then look at, looking at non-public schools. And that also includes residential treatment facilities where students' emotional well-being is, is such. That they require twenty-four-hour therapeutic support. Um, and then there's home and hospital that, that is, that we also provide as well as, next slide. Independent study and we're not going to spend too much time on that. We're actually going to slip because we've already spent a couple of board meetings talking about independent study. And the next slide is really about our district's response to independent study, AB one thirty. And how students in special education access AB one thirty. So we'll continue down and we're going to go to the next slide for the infographic. And this is just a nice little infographic for everyone to have with regards to a really bare-bones review of the continuum. This is not an exhaustive list. There's also a lot of different supports that it can, can occur. And strategies that can occur between those, those different areas of restriction. Um, and when we go back to thinking intentionally as IEP teams, I really like to, you know, encourage our teams with parents included. Um, as team members to really think, how do we avoid um, going into a more restrictive environment? Um, and making a determination as a team that it's necessary. And then the number one goal. And then the number one goal is, once we make that determination that it's necessary, what, when are we returning that student to a less restricted environment? So we're always thinking about coming back down that level of restriction. Some students make that progression a lot sooner than others, and that's okay. And some, some, some don't, that's okay. But it's really think, looking at the IEP team to analyze data to make those determinations for that student to have a more restrictive environment. Next slide, please. One thing for us to really think about when we're thinking about least restrictive decisions and placement, it's placement's not, and is not based on a student's category of special education or severity. It's based on the appropriateness of their own unique circumstances. And so, you know, some students that may be on the eligibility of autism may not require special education. A student that does require a special education that is under the eligibility of autism may not require a non-public school. We look at the student's specific needs and not really taking, we not really making placement decisions solely on category or the severity. It's really looking at the whole child and their unique circumstances. We inappropriate considerations for considerations of LRE is placements where services are traditionally provided and citing disruptions without evidence of behavior management attempts. We don't want to discriminate against a student. Just because of the student's having behavioral difficulties doesn't mean that they need to be segregated from their same age peers. What it means is their team needs to look about what they're doing within the student's environment for them to be able to have access to their education and to, to mitigate any type of behavioral disruption. So there's, there's processes in place for us to really think intentionally. We don't want anyone to get hurt, but what I see as behavior is communication. And I don't see it as, you know, willful acts of defiance of, of wanting to harm individuals. There are certain students that may be the case, but for most students, that's not. It's a level of communication and we really need to think intentionally about that. And then we can't consider cost unless excessive. But like really, as mentioned, special education is free and appropriate, no cost to parents. We need to think about what's right for the student and what's going to make and help them make progress in their goals. Next slide, please. This is just an array of services that, you know, I've, I've referenced a little here and there, but are just some. It's not an exhaustive list, but it's just some. You know, we have students with physical therapy needs. We have students with visual impairments that also require orientation mobility supports. We have students that require specialized deaf or hard of hearing supports, students with behavior intervention, and, you know, a lot of other supports that students require that aren't listed here. But the team looks at what's needed and we, we, we build in to what is needed for that student. And if we can't find it within, within our district, as I mentioned again, we look outside of our district. We may need to contract out. It may not be for a non-public school, but it may be for a non-public agency that provides a continuum of, of service that we don't have with, within our district. But it's our duty as a district to really think what's in the best interest of the student to make progress. Next slide, please. This is for your reference, really just giving you some ideas of what specialized instruction is, about adapting the appropriateness of the needs based on the student's disability for the instruction methodology and delivery of curriculum so that they can have access. And, you know, that differs based on every disability and the degrees of disability. There's different degrees of differentiation and really look at how that student is going to be able to, to best access so that it's individualized for them. Language and speech is a service that we provide both as a standalone service as well as a related service. And this focuses on communication, articulation and language such as, you know, pragmatics. Assistive technology is looking at different ways to, to provide both low tech as well as high tech for students to have access. Anything where from being able to, to use dictation to using, you know, a talker for a student that is non-verbal to thinking about a, you know, a slant platform for a student to elevate their paper so that they have a better visual view of it, or utilizing some, some feature on their Chromebook so that they can reduce visual clutter on their, their computer screen so that they can look at the content and, and not some of the clutter. Can you scroll down, please? And we're going to go to the next slide, I'm sorry. Other ones are adaptive physical education for our students that have some significant physical gross motor challenges that aren't able to be able to access our physical, physical education program to the same extent as their same age peers. We do have adaptive physical education, really working on those gross motor skills for students to be able to be functional and be able to participate in physical education activities. We also have occupational therapy that also looks at gross motor, but also fine motor and visual motor integration for students, as well as, you know, how does a student just, you know, navigate their education and providing, you know, sensory regulation techniques and supports for students? And then physical therapy that we discussed, specialized deaf or hard of hearing services to really help students learn how to utilize different devices. And that may be, you know, learning braille or utilizing, you know, different devices to be able to access the, the, the content of the classroom as well as community-based agencies such as the Department of Rehabilitation. And they help with adapting curriculum and so on and so forth, but specialized with deaf or hard of hearing. Next slide, please. Health and nursing, individual counseling, counseling and guidance and behavior intervention. You know, you can read these and it's really based on if the student requires this and additional support for them. So individual counseling for students, this is not to supplant the, the counseling support that's available to all general education students, but it's to supplement that support and to really make sure that the student's social, emotional well-being is, is not interfering with their access to their special education program. And so we have school psychologists to provide this support, same as counseling guidance. And then our behavior intervention support is typically utilized whenever a student has a behavior that impedes their learning or that of others. And a behavior support plan is put into place. And we have consultation from our behavior analysts that helps with implementation of that behavior support plan. Next slide, please. And so it is going, I'm sorry. Oh, I, I skipped ahead on my own slide. So we also specialize vision services for students that are visually impaired, helps with adapting curriculum for students that have low vision or visual impairments to have access. Orientation and mobility is for students with low vision that really can help them navigate their educational, as well as the community environment. It's not just about the school setting for orientation and mobility. It's also about their home and community access, which is a pretty spectacular service that we're able to, to provide for our students. And then when our students are turning age of 16, we start thinking about, as I mentioned earlier, their post-secondary transitional goals and looking at services such as college awareness. There's also career awareness and vocational assessment, counseling and guidance. So those are the, the continuum of services that I wanted to introduce to everybody this evening, and if you want to go to the next slide. And then I'm just going to check in with, you know, President Hinckley with regards to a time check because I think I was a little overly ambitious with regards to my 92 slides and being able to get that in, in, in an hour and a half. Because it is going on 7:12. And I guess my question to, to President Hinckley and the rest of the board and Dr. Wells is if it's okay to continue or to, to put a pause?
My, my two cents would be to give folks, we covered a lot of information, a lot of ground, Dr. Biggs, tonight, and I want to thank you for that. We also wanted to give both the board and the audience an opportunity to have questions and for you to field questions. And so it's about 7:13 now. And that gives them only 17 minutes. So I think this might be a perfect place to pause and start entertaining questions.
Beautiful. Well, I'd love to be able to come back and talk about the threat of educational benefits. I think that really is the, it's the guiding principle for teams to, and for families in the community to understand so that they can be, you know, active participants within IEPs. So love to come back, but I think you're right. Let's, let's dive into some questions, so.
I'll let the board, I don't know if board members have questions before we move to the public. We can, we can come back to. All right. Saying then, I'm going to move to our first question from Cheryl Thies. Or comment.
She read my mind. Good evening, board. First of all, I want to thank Dr. Biggs for a really, really comprehensive review. I do this training a lot and you just did a fantastic job and I appreciate that. And I know, having been in this position, that you could probably have spoken for two or three more hours and still be touching the tip of the iceberg. There was a couple of points I just wanted to make that you didn't, and not because they're omissions, but just because I think it's important for the community to understand them. The first is that special education starts, the district becomes responsible at age three. So there's often some misunderstanding on the part of families that just wait till they start kindergarten, but really that early intervention window is critical and Albany has those supports in place. Secondly, Dr. Biggs mentioned evaluations and that's very important, right? To get an independent or second opinion evaluation by someone the parent chooses. I just wanted to mention that it's really important that any evaluation, whether it's done by the district or by an outsider, is culturally appropriate, meaning it's performing the child's first, most comfortable language, that non-verbal students have a chance to show what they know in ways besides language. Otherwise, their scores can make them look like they have an intellectual disability when they don't. Secondly, that, or thirdly, okay. That the two most important things that came out of the recent Supreme Court case that Dr. Biggs didn't get to is that we, we want to focus on meaningful educational benefit and appropriately ambitious goals. And so I think that's been an important shift and Albany has always, I think, tried to get there. But it's not, you know, special education is not just the opportunity to go to school, but it is the right to receive a meaningful educational benefit and to have appropriately ambitious goals that contribute to future education, employment and independent living. And that's all. And I just want to thank the board and Dr. Biggs for doing this tonight because information really is power and the more we know, the better of a job we can do. Thanks.
Great. Thank you so much. Go ahead, Wendy. You might be muted.
Hi, how's that?
Yep.
Hi. So I'm a parent of a child with a learning disability and also a child with emotional disability and have found it pretty difficult to figure out how to access services and was wondering if there are thoughts about leveraging technology to make it easier for parents to be able to request services and to get more information about the process, potentially through the, through this school website. My kids are in high school, so the, the high school website would make, probably make sense. I think that's a real opportunity to, for more families to get information.
Thank you. Director Biggs, I don't know if you want to respond to these as they come in or?
I would love to. President Hinckley, thank you so much, Wendy, for, for, for speaking up and for, for, for asking that. I think what we're trying to do, and I think this was really on point when communication is really empowering for, for families to be able to be aware. And I'm really trying to, to build out communication channels through our department for our families to be aware of different activities, for students to be able to have support and for families to have support. And while that may not answer your question, we are building on it. And if you have, or any family that has concerns, talk to your case manager of your students. And if you're not getting anywhere with your case managers, talk to your program specialists at the high school. It's Jim Pierce. And, you know, and if you need to, call me. And I think, you know, a lot of people are always, you know, they're running a thousand different directions. And what I don't want to happen is for people to be running a thousand different directions and for us to lose sight on a student that has needs and that we weren't aware of being able to intervene with different ways, such as like you were mentioning, technology. So there's a lot of different ways the team can, can, can look at what are some of the challenges and integrate different supports for, for students. So my suggestion, talk to your case manager about some of your concerns and asking them about some of the service options that are available. And then you can also reach out to Jim Pierce or myself and be happy to talk to you.
Great, thanks. Mary, go ahead.
Thank you, board. Thank you, Dr. Wells, and thank you, Dr. Biggs, for this long, long, long overdue presentation to the board. It is very important that the governing body of the school district understands special education so that it can better support it. I thank you again, Dr. Biggs. I believe if I have a question that might be better answered in future workshops like this, because as Ms. Thies mentioned, this is just the tip of the iceberg. So while this might be one-on-one, we need one-on-two and all the way to the 500s so that we can get a full understanding of special education. So either for today or for future discussion, I'd like to ask you for the benefit of the board about predetermination and especially the illegality of it. Second, trustee Duran talked about having the board engage in advocacy at the state and federal level. And what do you know? There are some opportunities already out there. There, there's a group of advocates trying to get the state to fund college education and inclusion environments. So if you're interested in that, you know, your state, California State Assembly representatives that you can contact and advocate for that. And then finally, at the federal level, there are at least three bills that you could contact your representatives in the federal, in the House and in the Senate. One of them is the Keeping All Students Safe Act. The second one is the Protecting Our Students in School Act. And the third one is the Counseling, Not Criminalization Act, all of them sponsored by Senator Murphy of Connecticut. So if you want to get your advocacy on, here is at least an opportunity to get started. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristi.
Good evening. My name is Kristi and I'm the parent of a child who has been in Albany Unified School District since his preschool days at Albany Children's Center. He's now in the seventh grade in the special day class at Albany Middle School. And I'm calling because I wanted to say thank you so much, Dr. Biggs, for the presentation. It was a really nice summary and overview of the information. And already, since you've been in your role, the communication has been so much better than what we, I've ever, ever experienced in my child's last nine years in the program. I'm calling into comments and also have a question. I have a comment, or I'll start with a question. What suggestions do you and the team have regarding mitigating potential learning loss for kids with IEPs, especially those with significant disabilities who could not meaningfully interact with distance learning? Because there's still ongoing effects in terms of where he could have been. Also, what opportunities are currently in place at the middle school? I've heard of some at the high school, but what opportunities are currently in place for children with significant disabilities to meaningfully interact via a program like Best Buddies or something where there is a time for them to be able to interact with same age peers? And then finally, a comment. I know how important it is to keep everyone safe with COVID-19 and the Delta variant. However, I would love for us to continue to remember while masking is crucial, we need to also take into account that some students, because of their disability, cannot wear masks. And it's not because they have not been worked with extensively for hours, for weeks, for months. It's because of their disability. And it's important, I think, for all the educators to know that it's not the student's fault, it's not the parent's fault. And I've, that's it. I complete.
Thank you so much, Kristi. I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to say one, one thing to the three different areas that you brought up. First, the one thing is about mitigating learning loss. We are working with our teams to really understand how to analyze the impact on distance learning and to put together learning recovery plans. And so what we're trying to do is hold IEP meetings. And so, um, what we're trying to do is hold IEP meetings and to discuss this and then build in a learning recovery plan for students. And everyone is going to be different. And so, um, my suggestion is to, to call an IEP meeting, or now, now that I know that this is a concern, is that I will make a recommendation to call an IEP meeting so that an IEP meeting can be held to discuss the impact on distance learning and what the IEP's learning recovery plan is for your student. Um, but all families have that right to request that IEP and discuss this. And the IEP team is equipped to be able to, to review and discuss, um, what options are available and how we're going to help accelerate that learning through learning recovery plan. And then, uh, you know what? I'm just going to talk about the other two things too. Meaningful, you know, uh, times to, to participate with, uh, their same age, with students, same age peers. You know, I, not being at the site level, I don't know all the different opportunities, but knowing, um, having been on the site level, I know that there are ways for us to leverage great times for students to have access to their, their same-age peers. And so I can talk to our program specialist, Joanna Harris, at the middle school to get an idea, not just of best buddies, but other, uh, other, uh, supports that our special day class teacher, Katie Morrison, is, um, using or beginning or wanting to utilize or planning to utilize in order to help students have that meaningful participation with their same-age peers. Um, and then I appreciate your comments with regarding, um, the mask and, and not discriminating against students whose disabilities preclude them from, from wearing a ma- mask. And that, you know, our teams are working to, to, to support students that are unable to wear a mask um, and putting in the plans in place to make sure that they're, they're, they're safe and supported as well as everybody else. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have, uh, Dr. Sweta.
Hi, thank you, everyone, um, for just bringing attention to this topic. Um, I'm a parent of a child with an IEP and I just want to kind of, uh, you know, emphasize and make a request. Like, we spent two hours here trying to present this whole process. And imagine what it's like for a parent who is raising a young child, trying to navigate this system, while also trying to deal, accept the fact that their child has a learning difference or a disability. It's incredibly overwhelming and, um, my child has had an IEP for four years and it's only when I got involved in the disability squad, hiring my own advocate, did I even know about this, understand this process. So it took me four years. And in those four years, there's so much more that could have been done for my son. And so I just want to put a request out that when a, when there's, you know, a, a student that's going for like an SST, for example, that they're given a recording of this presentation, just for them to even understand the process. And then the resources, DREADF and all the other organizations, like, perhaps, you know, a list, like a packet that's just given to any parent that suspects that their child needs an assessment. So, um, and, and maybe even, you know, we have a support group now with Albany Disability Squad, but just really to be able to, um, support parents to journey through this process, because especially with early intervention, the time is so, you know, that window of when they're, when the child is developing, there's so much intervention that can be done at that time. And to spend years trying to figure out the system, I think, is like really not serving the child. So I just want to put that request out there to, um, the district.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sweta. And I just got to say, we have, we have, we have brilliant members of our community. I, I love those ideas, Sweta. Thank you so much. And I think there, there, there is more that we can do to be able to inform families. And whether it's, you know, uh, an abbreviated version of this, um, with attached resources, I, I agree. We need to be able to, to inform families earlier on. And, you know, right now, I'm working with the SLPA of trying to think of, you know, written, the, the written word needs to not just be in English, but all the other language. But also it's not the, the primary modality for, for a lot of different learners. And I think about that with our families and I think about access. And so at the SLPA level, we're also talking about what type of social media, what type of different ways can we infiltrate our community to bring awareness to, to special education? And so we're, we're back and forth. We're talking about podcasts, we're talking about videos. But there's, there, this is a big thing that we really want to bring to all of our community, not just in Albany, but within our Greater Bay Area. Um, and so, um, thank you so much.
Thank you. And we have, uh, one more comment from, uh, Cheryl Thies.
I'm so sorry, but it's just so on point to what Dr. Biggs just said. Some of you may wonder why I have the time to stalk your board meetings. And I just want to make it clear that one of the parts of the IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, that's often forgotten, is called Part D. And under Part D, uh, Congress recognized when it passed this law that these were really complex laws that families had to navigate in a complex process. And so they funded a parent training and information center, at least one in every state or territory across the country. And in this region, Disability Rights Education and Defense Fund, DREADF, is one. And that's, that's where I work. So families can call us to get information, free training, um, support, um, advocacy tips, and everything we do is free. So if you have questions about that, you can go to www.dredf.org and Dr. Biggs knows how to find us. Um, so just want parents to know that. It is complex and overwhelming and that's why we exist. Thanks.
And they're also, they're also located at an amazing campus called Ed Roberts Campus with a lot of other, uh, supports for, um, not just students with disabilities or families with students with disabilities, but also, um, adults with, uh, disabilities. Um, so it's, it's a, it's a great accessible place for, for all individuals to be able to get su- support. So, and DREADF is a great place. And we have been very fortunate to have, uh, you know, Cheryl, part of our community, to be able to, to help us through, um, you know, some of, some difficult terrain. Um, and I think when we think about students with learning differences, I don't think about one side or the other. I think about the student. And I, I really want us to leave with that today is that, you know, this is a lot of information. You know, I dedicated my life to it and, um, I, I haven't even gotten to the, you know, below the, there, there's just so much more to it. And so, um, we have a lot of work to do, um, as a community, as a society. But I, I really hope that we can get to a place where we're breaking down barriers for our students. We're not fighting against general education or special education or parents in districts, but we're fighting for that student. And so, um, that's where I'm going to leave this, this, this evening. I don't know if there's any other questions.
Can I, can I ask, as a wrap-up, um, Dr. Biggs, can you take a minute or 90 seconds to share with folks what's on our horizon in special education, some of that excitement and energy? I think this might be a good point, raising from, um, an upcoming audit to, um, some other initiatives that you guys are doing in special ed. I think this is the perfect platform to close out with that, I think.
Thank you so much. You know, there, there's, there's actually a lot to talk about. So one, you know, I want to talk about the special education audit. You know, I'm working with a, uh, or trying to work with a consultant to be able to really look through, uh, our systems and practices, um, both internally within the Department of Special Education, just to ensure timely assessments and also ensure compliance and that students' needs are being met. And also looking at, you know, what can we do differently to be able to really leverage inclusive practices for our students? Um, and I think, you know, we're really well positioned right now to be thinking about how to better support students act, um, having, uh, being part of general education, whether that's being the, you know, accessing general education curriculum or being with your, your general education peers. And so we're looking at, you know, what does staffing look like? What is, what are some different practices that we can get students to be in the classroom versus segregated classes within the same building? And so we're looking at, you know, we've used terminologies of co-teaching. I don't like to use the terminology co-teaching, but it's the thing to do. Um, I like to think about inclusive team teaching practices. It's a marriage between two different educators, a credential holder that has a general education credential and a credential holder has a special education credential. And it's about dividing, conquering, unpacking standards and really think about different modalities for students to have access. And that's something that I'm really excited about. Um, we, uh, we're, we're also actively trying to hire people. And, uh, one of those persons is, uh, you know, we're trying to, to bring on additional support for our department, for our, our general education teachers and our special education teachers. A, uh, a program specialist that can really dedicate their time and energy to being able to help close that gap and foster more inclusive practices and, and really help support our, um, our curriculum instruction, our assistant superintendent and her team and special education team to come together and be part of the process of moving forward for MTSS and Universal Design of Learning. Um, as well as what, you know, Kristi was asking earlier about is what are we doing with learning loss recovery? Focus, focusing some attention on that. And we're able to do this for a couple of different reasons. One, because Dr. Wells sees the need. And two, that we do have monies from, from, um, you know, the state right now for learning recovery as well as alternative dispute resolution, which we're allocating towards, towards staffing as well as, um, different trainings in order to, to support our current staff. Other, I think, remarkable things that are coming on right now is, while we are in a staffing crisis and I'm not, I, I mean, it is what it is. We, we, you know, this year, I started the year with five and a half teachers down. Luckily, we were able to fill those positions. Unfortunately, I mean, with great contractors, uh, for some of the, from the, for some of those positions, and all other some great hires. Um, but you know, life happens and things are going on and some people have resigned as far as contractors or even some of our employees for other, one reason or the other. Um, we, we were down a special day class preschool teacher, um, which was a huge hit for us. We have a, an amazing special day class program, um, that, you know, a lot of our surrounding SLPAs, uh, districts look to and will place students with, within our program. And so it was a really huge hit, but we were very fortunate to be able to, to hire. Um, and she, her name will, she will, will soon be hired because her name will be coming to the board shortly, um, a special day class teacher with extensive experience. That is also going to not just be focusing her time as the special day class teacher for preschool, but also fostering inclusive practices for, for students that, um, have, uh, that are on the autism spectrum and have non-verbal, uh, or, or, or that are non-verbal. And so really thinking about how do we, um, build, uh, supports across the district to support all of our students that struggle, um, with different learning styles. Specifically, students that have more moderate to severe needs, but can be beneficial for all students. Um, and then, uh, we also, um, lost one of our, uh, occupational therapists that's been in the district for years. And we've been scrambling to find somebody. I've been looking for contractors left and right. Um, and it, the contractors, I mean, there's just nobody out there. Um, and we were very fortunate to find somebody that, um, is also going to be going to the board next week. And will be overseeing our OT program at Ocean View, the middle school and high school, which we're really excited that she's coming on board. Um, and then I, I mentioned earlier about some of our, our monies for, for, uh, learning loss and alternative dispute resolution. Part of the allocation was also for our contractors. Um, and so we've also have been able to contract out with some assessors, uh, both for psycho, psychoeducation evaluation as well as, um, as well as occupational therapy and other, other. So that's been pretty, pretty fortunate. Um, we've hired a couple of paraeducators, um, that are starting, which is, which is great. My, uh, secretary and I have been, um, working on interviewing, uh, paraeducators and putting them forward in the process and putting people forward. They're going through the ability test and we're getting them placed in classrooms. Um, and if not in a classroom, as at least on the sub-list, because as of two days ago, we only had one person on our sub-list. Now, we have two, which is great. Um, but we're also, we've also, um, hired somebody that will be starting later this week and then hopefully somebody next week too. Um, we-
Let me, let me say, um, I wanted to take 90 seconds to wrap it up. I think you, I think you thought I said 90 minutes.
Sorry.
90 seconds.
Let me, let me just, let me just say this one last nugget. This is really, you know, low frequency services are so hard to come by. At the beginning of the year, we did not have a teacher with a deaf or hard of hearing. We have secured a contract with a teacher with a deaf or hard of hearing. My colleagues are jealous because I was able to get this for us. I'm so excited. Ellen Hoek's company, who's going to the board, also teacher, uh, orientation and mobility specialist. She's, um, is going, we have one that's going to be coming to the board, um, next week too. Really excited about low frequency services that you can't find people, um, which I'm so excited about. So I will be quiet. Thank you so much.
Um, so I do see Vice President Dos's hand, but I also wanted to, just in terms of next steps, it's, I, I think we're all looking forward to hearing more about the audit idea and what you're thinking about. How do we really evaluate the outcomes of our program so that the board has a better understanding of, of how do we think about the achievement gap outcome, uh, issues that were specifically related to our special education students? And how do you approach understanding that kind of data in order to evaluate our programs? And, you know, part of the presentation you didn't get to was about this kind of, you know, how do we assess? How do we set goals? How do we, um, you know, evaluate the performance of individual students in a way that reflects their, uh, their individual goals? But how do we also make sure that the district has a strong sense of whether what we're doing is working and whether it's effective? Um, so I think we all look forward to hearing more about how we can use that audit or evaluation or whatever we call it to actually make those kinds of assessments. Um, because that's been something that I know we've all been hearing about for several years. Um, so I, I think if you're able, when you bring back that audit proposal to us, to give us a little bit more of maybe a quick overview of what you pulled together, we can all read it on our own, right? But a quick overview of what, what kind of data do we gather? How do we use it now? Um, what kind of data or other information could an audit get for, for us? And what might we learn from that? Um, I think that would be really great as a next step. So Vice President Dos, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, just a quick question for, um, Dr. Biggs or staff. I thought that there was already something in place, um, or a language around, um, if you have a disability or a reason why you can't wear the mask that you're not required to wear. So I, I, I thought that there was something already, um, in place. If, um, anybody could touch on that really quickly, just in, uh, because the parent mentioned it, so it kind of-
Yeah, I, you know, I, I, I think it is that there are mask exemptions. And I think the biggest thing is just making it known to the community. Because when someone's not wearing a mask, you know, we are right now positioned to be very alert of, well, oh, they're not wearing a mask. And we're, 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 our sites are all full masks, but it also is that you have to be mindful of students that do have disabilities. So, you know, students aren't being punished or discriminated by the school for not wearing a mask. It's just bringing awareness that some individuals, based on their disability, are unable to wear a mask. I hope that made, that makes sense. Did I answer it, Brian, or?
I just want parents to, for it to be clear that if your child is unable to wear a mask and it's a medical reason or, um, relay it to their disability, um, that, you know, they, they, they won't be sent home or anything, like, they don't have to wear the mask. So I just, I don't know if there's something that's already in writing or how we communicate that with parents, but it sounded as if that parent was under the assumption, um, that if their student didn't wear a mask, that there were going to be some sort of consequences or repercussion. I just wanted to be clear that that is not the case.
Yeah, and, and yeah, it's, I don't think there's anything written down. I think what we do is we, we, we meet the kids that where they're at. Um, and we try to communicate with the families on a personal level of knowing that, you know, we can, you know, part of our job is to help, you know, supporting students, um, with being able to navigate their environment. Part of that is teaching them to wear the mask. We have students that don't wear the mask. It doesn't mean that we don't try to prompt, um, don't, it doesn't mean that we don't praise, because we want them to be able to be, you know, part of their, um, their peers. And right now, everyone is wearing a mask, but we are not sending anybody home, um, based on their disability for not wearing a mask.
Thank you. All right. And with that, unless there are other questions, um, this meeting was recorded, so it will be available for, uh, folks who want to share this with parents or others who might be interested. Um, our next regular board meeting is Tuesday, October 12th, and, uh, we'll see most of you there. I'm saying hi to the little one. Bye.